This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for December 21st, 2020. In accordance with social distancing requirements, Governor Pritzker's Executive Orders 2020-43 and 2020-44 in Section 7E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, 5ILCS 120/7/NE. In a determination by the Mayor of the City of Warrenville, this meeting will be held virtually. Persons wishing to comment, provide public comment are strongly encouraged to submit written comments via email at info@warrenville-il.us by 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Reminder, as always, this meeting is being recorded. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Brummel.
Here. Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Crishell. Alderman Crishell. There he is. Okay, I'll come back. Alderman Widener. Last Alderman Widener again. Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Treasurer Brenner. Well, where is everybody? City Attorney Brooke Lenaman.
Here.
City Administrator John Coakley.
I am here.
Assistant City Administrator Christina White.
Here.
Deputy Chief Jeff Jacobson.
Here.
Finance Director Kevin Dahlstrand.
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menzer.
Here.
Deputy Public Work Director Phil Kukler.
Here.
Alderman Widener. Is he there? I think he's having technical difficulties. Okay, and now who was?
Alderman Crishell.
Alderman Crishell, thank you. And one more time.
Yes, I'm here, also having some issues.
Alderman Widener.
Alderman Widener is here. He is having some computer difficulties.
Thank you. So that's everyone. Very good. Thank you, Emily. Now we do the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll do it here at City Hall, and I want to do it at home with us. The pledge of allegiance, flag, and states of the republic stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, we're going to begin tonight's meeting with a public hearing for the 2020 Property Tax Levy Truth in Taxation. If one of the Aldermen would make that motion, please, and someone second it.
Alderman Davalos, I'd like to make a motion to offer second reading and pass ordinance 020.
Alderman, excuse me, we need a motion to go into public hearing for the 2020.
I apologize. I apologize. Okay, hang on. Okay, so somebody else better make that. I don't have it.
Okay, someone like to make that motion?
Alderman Berry, I'd like to make a motion to go into public hearing for the 2020 Property Tax Levy Truth in Taxation.
Second Alderman.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Alderman Anderson.
Oh, thank you, Alderman Anderson. Alderman Anderson is the second. All right, we have a motion and a second to go into public hearing. We have a roll call, please. Alderman Crishell. Alderman Crishell. We know he's there. Lost him again. He's here. Okay, Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
And you want to call Crishell one more time? Alderman Crishell, are you back?
I think so. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you wish to vote aye to go into a public hearing?
Yes, aye.
Great, unanimous then. We are entering into a public hearing for the purpose of discussion of the 2020 Property Tax Levy Truth in Taxation. We'll begin with some opening comments by Finance Director Kevin Dahlstrand. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before your tonight for consideration of the 2020 Property Tax Levy, the levy seeks no rate change. We have chosen again to voluntarily cap our levy. We've been doing that since 2004. The levy, however, does seek to obtain about $202,000 in addition to last year's levy. 75% of that is actually for a non-cap contribution to the police pension fund. I also want to make a note that earlier today I sent out a clarifying page for Page 5 of the ordinance regarding the police pension fund. In the middle column, which is the estimated receipts from other sources other than the levy, there is a negative number in there. This, the explanation that we provided this afternoon reads as follows. The, this number represents the difference between the 2019 actuarially required and budgeted levy amount of $1,038,677 and the actuarially required 2020 levy amount of $1,190,032, which will be budgeted in 2022, and that has been included as a balancing figure. And what that means is both $1,038,000 and $1,190,000 are actuarially required contributions which the city makes annually. The balancing figure in the middle is the result of many years of the city having made additional contributions, which always made the budgetary figure higher than the actuarially determined value. Since we are not in a position to make that additional contribution in 2020, that budget figure is now falling below the actuarial determined number for next year, and that has led to a negative figure in the middle column. That's getting a little bit into the weeds, but they are both required contributions, both of which we will make, and this really is the result of a timing difference between when revenue is received and when we have to make that levy.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Any additional comments? City Administrator Coakley?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go through the Aldermen for comments and/or questions before we ask the public for the same, beginning with Alderman Anderson.
No questions.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashauer.
No comments or questions.
Thank you, Alderman Berry.
No comments, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos.
Yes, I just don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask the question. It's actually about Consent Agenda A, which is this. Can I ask it now, or do I pull it off the consent agenda? It's a sentence in that consent agenda that I just wanted to ask about, but it's about the levy.
Okay, let's take a look at it.
Okay, in 6A, second paragraph, it says, "The proposed 2020 property tax levy does not include any proposed tax rate increase." Are we talking about what the county or the township, that rate increase that they use with their multiplier that changes everything? We're talking about that? It's not about a rate increase we would make. It's about a rate increase that would occur because of what the county is doing, right?
Kevin, please.
No, Mayor, Alderman, that actually is referring to the City of Warrenville. We are not changing, we are not asking for a rate change in the City of Warrenville's tax rate. We are only asking for additional dollars, not a change in rate. It does not have anything to do with the county.
All right, so you were just explaining it in that Item A. You were just making a point that we don't have a rate increase.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So no more questions or comments.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. First of all, the explanation for the footnote is appreciated, but it doesn't exactly match up what it says in the Agenda Item summary. It says that $151,632 was requested to cover an increased police pension levy, but the number on Page 5 is $151,355. It doesn't quite match. It's close. So I guess my question is just what, what explains that?
Okay, let's deal with that one.
And then the second question, I'm not sure you know that off the top of your head, but if we could get that, that'd be great. And then the second question is, since Naperville Township has not given us any information, the township is often late getting us this information, and this year they don't seem to have given us any information at all. Do we have an estimate in here to take that into consideration, or what's the procedure since we have to move forward with our levy without information about new EAV from the township?
Okay, Finance Director Dahlstrand?
We have not at this point included any estimate in there from Naperville Township since we were unable to change or to obtain that information from Naperville Township. Even without that information, it would not have changed the amount we were levying. It would only change the effect on the people who receive those tax bills. So at this point, it would only spread that tax out over more EAV than it does now, so that should be to the advantage of everyone involved.
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Alderman.
No, so they are generally late every year, and we don't necessarily get those numbers from them in time to do our property tax levy. So I guess the question is just how do we deal with that in terms of making this information available to or transparent to the public?
Well, once we receive some extensions, or I'm sorry, either some EAV information from Naperville Township, if they do ultimately provide it, or the other way we can make that available is, once it's available from the county, we can make sure that that's published at that time, because we will receive a list of the new construction and new EAV values from the county, once they obtain them and do their calculations.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the original question about the discrepancy of the numbers, Kevin?
I'm going to suggest that that was a typo on my part, because the $155,000, I'm sorry, $155,000 versus the 151, the 151 comes right out of the actuarial report. So the 151, 355 is the correct number.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
My apologies. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Goodman. Alderman Crishell?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Widener.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and Alderman Wilson?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments from the audience here at City Hall? Mr. Bob Seibert?
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. The, a couple of questions on the expected revenue. The $204,000, $202,000, if we take the 2.3%, it's allowable under the tax cap, we wind up with $82,355. If we add to that the new construction that is allowable to the general fund, which, after the 4.3 million, was reduced because of the TIF districts that received, the majority of that, were down to 900,000, according to the records here, and that will increase the revenue by $6,600, which brings us to $88,955. And then we would add whatever the new construction is in Naperville Township would be added as outside the tax cap to the general fund. It does make a difference as what that figure is. And we can get an estimate of that by going downstairs and looking at the building permits, because this is where the Naperville Township then gets their information. The problem occurs here, there was stated that $151,000 for the police pension is outside the tax cap. It may be outside the tax cap, but when you look at the tax property tax statements, it is an item there, pension fund. So what will occur is we appear to have somewhere in the vicinity of $115,000 that has to be added to the property tax to obtain the payment and balance here. And that, unlike what was stated at the first reading, where there's no proposed tax increases, there will be a rate tax increase to obtain this amount of money, even though it's out of the tax cap. It will be on the tax bills and will be seen by the taxpayers and will be an increase in the taxpayers. So I think that should be specifically stated so that everybody knows that, so that they know exactly what is occurring with the property tax, and it isn't that this $202,000 comes automatically and is within the tax cap. It is exceeding the tax cap, not under it, but still the taxpayers will pay this amount of money. That's the, what we would say, the macro. If we look at the micro effect of this, you can look at Ray Street, and if you look at Ray Street on the west side, the individual households will pay, if they have a 5% increase in their assessed valuation, will pay 2.3%. If you go to the east side of Ray Street, their individuals are in TIF 3. The 5% is multiplied times the taxable EAV. The one house that I've always given you the information on has an EAV of $48,010. 5% of that would be $2,400. You then multiply that times the consolidated tax rate, which is the new consolidated tax rate. If we take the old tax rate from 2019, we would come up with an additional $185.80. To this, the frozen level on that particular property is $41,370. We would then multiply the tax cap allowable, 2.3%, and that would give us the $73.66. We would add the 73.66 with the 185.80, and we would see that this taxes would increase $259.46. From the previous tax payment in 2019, which was $3,717, we would see that this is a 6.98% tax increase. The interesting point here is the fact that since we're in a closed system with the property tax rate, every house on Ray Street on the east side will receive a 6.98% increase allowable on that property. Every house in TIF 3 and TIF 4, if they have a 5% increase in assessed valuation, will have a 6.98% increase in taxes. However, if they have a 4% increase, they would have a lower than 6.98. If they have a higher, 6%, 7%, they would have a higher rate. If next year the excess value increases by 10%, it would be 13.9% increase in taxes. One side of Ray Street, 5% to EAV, has no impact. The other side of the street, it has a complete impact on the taxation. So I think that we should look at this, because in the taxation, the information on this and the planning of the TIF revenue, the planning of the revenue on the taxpayers has a tremendous effect. TIF 4, same scenario. It doesn't change with the property tax in the TIF statute. It's an overlay. So in TIF 4, the same scenario would occur. All houses that are being utilized as houses will have, if they have a 5% increase in EAV, will have a 6.98% increase in their property taxes. So I think that this has been overlooked. I think this has been overlooked with the, just because you can outline and attain additional funds in a pension fund that's outside the tax cap, you have to look at who is paying that. The people that are paying that are the taxpayers. These are the people with the houses. So at least you can tell the people what is occurring. So I'd like to see the information given to the taxpayer.
Thank you, Bob. I guess we're past whatever that was. Do we have any email comments for the public hearing? Do we have anyone on the line that wishes to contribute to the public hearing, either with a question or a comment? Okay, I'm going to assume that everyone that wanted to be heard is heard, has been heard. I would now accept a motion to return to open session or to close the public hearing, I mean, I'm sorry. Motion to close the public hearing, please.
I'd like to, Alderman Davalos, like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second Alderman Ashauer.
Very good. Motion and a second. Roll call, please. Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Crishell.
Aye.
Okay, we are back then into regular session. This is the part of our program that we set aside at every meeting for citizens' comments. Do we have anyone in the audience that wishes to make a comment at this point? Nope, nobody here. Any emails sent in for the meeting? We have none there. Anyone on the line from the public that wishes to make a comment at this point? Very good. Once we conclude this portion of our meeting, there will not be another opportunity for public to comment. So we're going to move on then to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. Just a couple of things. One, in remembrance of my good friend and former Alderman Dave Schultz, I'm wearing my one and only Christmas tie tonight that he gave to me many years ago, when he saw that before Christmas I was not wearing a Christmas tie. He thought that was inappropriate, so he provided one for me, and I've tried to wear it every Christmas since then. So thanks, Dave, wherever you are. And of course, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone. If you're celebrating Christmas, Merry Christmas. If you're celebrating another holiday, Happy Holidays to you. We hope things go well, and you have a wonderful holiday. Finally, welcome to our newly minted Aldermen for Ward 1, Jay Anderson. Jay, welcome. I'm happy to see that you're still with us for the council meeting. You had a baptism by fire last Monday night with a three-hour-plus committee meeting. He's still smiling, folks. I think we've got him for good. So Jay, welcome aboard. We're delighted to have you as part of our team. And also finally, just a message in general from all of us here at City Hall. As the year draws to a close, we recognize the many challenges 2020 has delivered to us personally and professionally, but also the opportunities to test our resilience and our resolve to meet the moment. Take a few minutes of this holiday season to reflect on the small victories, the backyard staycations, the birthday drive-by parades, getting the kids successfully through e-learning, and finding new ways to connect with and care for those that you love. And it is in these difficult times that focusing on the good is so very important. If 2020 taught us anything, it would be to appreciate what we have, our families, friends, and activities that we so enjoy. As we look forward to 2021, we may still be facing challenges for a while, but we know that we are not in it alone. We have each other. That is what it means to be part of the Warrenville community. So on behalf of the City Council and the staff, we would like to thank the community for its support and for doing your part in 2020 to show, to slow the spread of COVID-19. Please stay safe and Happy Holidays again from everyone here at City Hall and the elected officials. Okay, that's all I have for this evening. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Today was the last day to file nomination petitions for the April 6th, 2021 Consolidated Election. And I'm here to report, the following candidates have filed their petitions for Mayor David Brummel, Michael Hoffman; for City Clerk Julie Clark; for Ward 1 Alderman Jay Anderson; for Ward 2 Alderman William Widener; for Ward 3 Alderman Kathy Davalos; for Ward 4 Alderman Claire Berry. And I want to thank everybody who has stepped up, committed to serving the community of Warrenville for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Treasurer?
I think they have. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Now we'll go through the Aldermen, beginning with Alderman Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody. Thank you for welcoming me in. Alderman Berry, I just assumed all committees in the whole went three hours, so I didn't know any better, and you guys have me all ready for whatever our future meetings will be. And also wanted to share that I think many of you know I work in the healthcare field, and I've spent the last several days watching healthcare givers receive the vaccination, and just to see the hope and the energy in the eyes of your frontline food service workers, environmental workers, and nurses and techs and physicians. I just, I haven't seen that look in folks' eyes, you know, for probably 10 or 11 months. And so it's not, we're clearly not at the end of a tunnel, but we can see a light, and it is very encouraging, and I really look forward to the progression that we'll have over the next many months. Thank you. That's all of my comments.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashauer?
I'd just like to say thanks to everybody in the community that took the time to decorate. If you go around town, it's very obvious the effort that's put in, and it's just fun to see it. And I'd like to wish happy, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry?
Yes, I'd just like to say again, as everyone else has.
Yes, I'd just like to say again, as everyone else has, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, whatever. There's a lot of different things going on this season, so happiness to everyone. And no, Alderman Anderson, most meetings do not last three hours, but it just so happens that some of us like to talk a lot. And that includes director mentor. No, I'm kidding. If he would just stay in his own meetings, we'd be fine. Anyway, yes, the decorations in town are amazing. You drive down every street and multiple people have decorations out. I've never seen so much going on in the city. And it's great to see that because people are really getting in the spirit because what do they have? You know, so I think they're making their, not only their families happy, but their neighbors happy too. So thank you to all the citizens of Warrenville for doing that.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to say the same, just wishing everybody, this is a crazy time, but a wonderful season, and I'm just hoping people have found their own unique ways to be together. And I too, I'd like to thank city staff for an incredible performance and year and creativity and perseverance in getting us through this COVID times. I, I have really been impressed and so proud of our staff and the ideas they've come up with and how well everything's gone. It's just a lot of work and the finances, I mean, you think about it and it's just incredible. So I really want to express gratitude for that. And lastly, I'd like to just thank the residents of Ward Three, our big sprawling Ward Three, which I love so much, for their support as I've chosen to run again, and I just appreciate it so much. And yeah, just, everybody just have a great holiday and a good start to twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Alderman. I have to agree, staff has been phenomenal over the last few months, and I would also like to recognize that. We are very, very blessed with the quality of people that we get to work with here at City Hall. They have gone above and beyond repeatedly, extra hours, extra effort, extra meetings, dealing with problems that we have never dealt with before, dealing with technical problems that seem to be reoccurring and difficult to handle, but they're always there, they always make things work. So thank you to all the staff and all of our employees. They, they make this job that we have as elected officials one of the joys of our life because we get to work with them. So I just wanted to echo your comments, Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
Thank you. Yes, it is very sobering to see at this time of year the, the huge increase in hospitalizations just as we're all trying to celebrate holidays and, and hoping to be with our families, at least virtually when we can be. It, it brings to mind one very sad statistic that's on the horizon. We're not going to be meeting together for another two weeks, two weeks from today on the fourth. And in between now and then, given the current rate of death, it's very likely that DuPage County will go across the one-thousand-death threshold. We're not quite there yet, but in two weeks, I think it looks fairly certain that we will be. So I just want to remind everybody, as you are all reminded daily, that we just need to make it a little longer to get those vaccines into our arms. We do not want to see the same kind of huge increase in hospitalizations and deaths that we saw after Thanksgiving. So everybody who is making choices about what kind of holiday gatherings you're going to have this week, I really implore you to individually take responsibility for making safe choices a little longer. A thousand dead people here in DuPage County is a tragedy. It's not a number. It's a lot of individual mothers and fathers and brothers and sisters and sons and daughters who've died. Some of the people that I know and some of their family have been lost. And it's a really tough time for them to be without their family at the holidays. So please make good choices. We can get through this dark, dark pandemic until we get those vaccines in, in more people's arms and we can go back to a much closer approximation of normalcy for the next holiday season. So good luck, stay safe, and I just want all of you to be healthy and all of your friends and family too as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Crishell.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing that hasn't been said already, other than, you know, Happy Holidays, and I too am ready to kick twenty-twenty out of here and get a mulligan and try to start over and get back to some sort of normal. So I'm, I'm sure I'm not the only one either, so.
Thank you. Alderman Widener.
Thank you. First of all, I think I owe everyone apology. I could see you all shrinking away. I think it was my phone that was on simultaneously with my computer. I was having some issues trying to get onto the meeting tonight. For some reason, my microphone and camera was not working, so I dialed in. And I think when the computer took hold, that was the squelching noise that I saw you all react to, and I'm very sorry about that. I just wanted to mention to Chairman Berry that on behalf of the community development officials, we were pleased to be able to provide some valuable content, which was worthy of some great discussions last week, and glad to have that included on, on your agenda. So you're welcome for that. And also, I just wanted to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and I hope everyone experiences peace and joy in the coming new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson.
No, I agree with almost everything that's been said. So I wanted to thank staff. It's just been a tough year. It's been a tough year for the staff and hardworking, and a lot of decisions had to be made that we didn't want to face, but we had to, and they did it. And also, thank you to all the member, all the residents in Warrenville. I mean, this year's been tough for us individually as families, but also we made some decisions during this past year that not every one of you agreed with, but everyone expressed their opinions, and we got a chance to listen to you. We ask you to continue to talk to us, let us know your feelings. Twenty-twenty-one will be a lot different. So we're counting on staff and we're counting on all the residents here for, have a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, stay safe, and we'll see you all next year.
Thank you, Alderman. We will move on then to the city administrator, John.
Thank you. A couple of quick comments. I will echo Alderman Goodman's comments. Everyone, please remember, be safe, follow the CDC and Illinois Department of Public Health and Page Health Department guidelines. Please be safe over the holidays. If you can stay home and stay away from people and visit virtually, please do so. It's, it's really, really important. And do all the other things, wear a mask, wash your hands, stay separate, use that social distancing, whenever you have to be around people if you, obviously, we have to go out sometimes. The other things, a couple of quick comments. I just want to echo, thank you to all the city staff. I do get the pleasure of seeing many of them every day, not as much as we used to. Many in little squares like we see in this meeting tonight, but they are doing a heck of a job. Just the dedication and loyalty and commitment to committing to, sorry, to the performing of the services for our residents has since been outstanding this year, more so than even before. And they're a really good group, and, and they do deserve that appreciation and recognition. I also want to thank the mayor and council and our elected officials. You are very supportive. You have dedication to public service, and this is a really good community. And your commitment does show, there's not just these long meetings, sometimes three hours, but also, hey, I'm not in your shoes. I can't imagine for the meager amount of money that you get, you do it for something bigger than that, which is a good thing. It's a dedication to public service and serving the community. I also just, I, I heard a couple of comments that reminded me, we should thank the community. It's been a tough year for everybody. Thank you for hanging in there. Please be safe and be careful. And then just a Happy Holidays wish to everyone. I am looking forward to a great twenty-twenty-one. It has to be better. Just everyone, continue and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, John. City Attorney, Brooke.
Happy Holidays to everyone, and not to beat the same drum, but I did want to say what an honor it's been to work alongside city staff through this past year. They've really done an incredible job, and it was really a privilege of mine to work alongside them as we tried to figure out so many new and challenging problems and, and try and find solutions to those problems. So thank you for an interesting year, and I hope next year is a lot more boring.
Thank you, Brooke. One last thing then, before we move on. Excuse me, a reminder that the City of Warrenville calendar is available again for your pickup here at City Hall and also up at what used to be Frank's and then Family Foods and is now Tom's Market in Warrenville. Market subsidized the cost for the calendar this year. We're very grateful for that. Keith and Deborah Swindon put the calendar together. The photographs that Keith took are phenomenal. I think you'll enjoy them, and it's another wonderful effort from volunteers from our town. We have a limited number this year, so we're trying to say, get up there early and quick. First come, first served. Either here at City Hall or at, again, Tom's Market. I think we also have some available at the library and also Park District. You can try there, but the best place to come is City Hall or Tom's again. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the business of the meeting then, beginning with the necessity to approve the agenda for this evening. So if I could have a motion, please.
Alderman Widener moves to approve the agenda for the December twenty-first, two thousand twenty city council regular meeting.
Alderman Davalos, second.
Motion in a second. Do we have any comments and/or changes? Please speak up, identify yourself. Hearing none, we'll move on then with a roll call for the approval of the agenda this evening as presented. Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Crishell.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. The agenda is approved as presented. We also need the approval of several sets of minutes this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion also?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the December seventh, two thousand twenty city council meeting, to approve the minutes of the December seventh, two thousand twenty city council closed session meeting, and to approve the minutes of the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty Public Works and Infrastructure Committee regular meeting.
Alderman Davalos, second.
Motion in a second. Again, may I have a roll call, please? Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Crishell.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Yeah, the minutes are approved as presented. I will now read the consent agenda for this evening. Item six A, offer second reading and pass ordinance O-two-zero-two-zero dash four-three for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May first, two thousand twenty and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. B, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O-two-zero-two-zero dash four-four, amending the authorized strength ordinance to include temporary part-time building inspector, temporary part-time chief code official, and five temporary emergency snowplow driver positions, and authorize the city administrator to fill these positions along with the vacant Public Works Director position. C, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, waive second reading, and approve ordinance O-two-zero-two-zero dash four-five, authorizing disposal of city-owned surplus property utilizing open auction service. D, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and pass ordinance, excuse me, pass resolution R-two-zero-two-zero dash seven-seven, extending the duration of the March sixteenth, two thousand twenty declaration of emergency until the adjournment of the next regular special or emergency meeting of the city council. E, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R-two-zero-two-zero dash seven-eight, approving a memorandum of agreement between the City of Warrenville and IBEW Local seven-oh-one. F, accept staff recommendation and pass resolution R-two-zero-two-zero dash seven-nine, approving the acceptance of the public improvements and bill of sale for the Stafford Place subdivision, reducing the letter of credit to ten percent and placing the project into the two-year maintenance period. G, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and pass resolution R-two-zero-two-zero dash eight-zero, approving the engineering agreement with Engineering Resource Associates Incorporated for the final phase-two engineering design of the Trailhead Project in the amount of eighty-four thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars. H, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and direct staff to work with the city attorney to create an ordinance approving the waiver of twenty-twenty-one liquor license renewal fees for the twenty-twenty liquor licensees that provide on-premise consumption of alcoholic beverages. I, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and vote to not fund nor implement the Warrenville Grove Trail Connection project at this time. J, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and vote to not fund nor implement the Maple Hill and Fox Hollow Trail, excuse me, Connection project at this time. Direct staff to continue to apply for grant funding and direct staff to negotiate a new intergovernmental agreement or Eastman Agreement for the project with the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County when outside grant funding is secured. K, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation, approve the Public Works reorganization plan and direct staff to create decision packages for the superintendent and crew leader positions for city council consideration as part of the FY two thousand twenty-two budget. L, accept Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation and approve the extension of the temporary COVID-nineteen policies through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Accept staff recommendation and approve the waiver of raffle and twenty-four-hour license fees and bond requirements for calendar year two thousand twenty-one for the organizations included on the two thousand twenty-one waiver of license fees list. N, receive and file minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission meeting held on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty. O, receive and file minutes of the Bicycleists and Pedestrian Advisory Commission meeting held on November tenth, two thousand twenty. P, receive and file minutes of the Community Relations Task Force meeting held on November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. Q, receive and file minutes of the Plan Commission Zoning Board of Appeals regular meeting held on December tenth, two thousand twenty. R, receive and file report of invoices paid up to December sixteenth, two thousand twenty in the amount of forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. S, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before January fourth, two thousand twenty in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. And T, receive and file report of master debit card expenditures for the month of November, two thousand twenty in the amount of nine-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. Yeah, I have a motion for approval, please.
Alderman Widener moves to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Alderman Davalos, second.
Motion in a second. Thank you, may I have a roll call, please? Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Crishell.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. The consent agenda has been approved as presented for this evening. We will move on now to the regular agenda. We have one item, a discussion and update. now to the regular agenda. We have one item, a discussion and update on the FY 2021 financial situation. Begin with City Administrator Coakley.
As we've been doing, I will just lead off with a few comments and then Kevin will fill in the details. You've got before you the update of the fiscal impacts of COVID-19. Again, for the public, for everyone else on this call too. This is just about the market-sensitive revenues of the city that are more impacted by fluctuations in the economy and is, I'm sure everybody in the entire region knows, the pandemic has had a very, very big impact on our revenues, our businesses. And we're trying to reflect those here. There's some things that are stable with government revenues, such as the property tax. Sales taxes aren't doing too badly. They're doing pretty well, but there's some other things that are very, very heavily impacted. Some of the taxes that affect consumption and entertainment, amusement taxes are definitely down. Food and beverage is struggling and the one that's the most devastated that stands out to me always is our hotel taxes. Without business travel, Warrenville is in a business corridor. Most of our hotel stays are business travel-related and others are having a major impact. This is the second month of the new format. We get some positive comments last month about it, so it seems to be easier for everyone to follow. If that should change or you have any other feedback for Kevin or I on this report, please let us know. We'll try to accommodate to make it more meaningful, but I'll turn it over to Kevin and then we can answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you, John. Kevin, anything you'd like to highlight at this time?
The only other thing, John did a good job of going over what we did. The only other one I'd like to make sure we mention is the significant reduction in the amusement tax that has occurred largely due to the closure of Regal Theaters and and also Main Event to a large degree as well. That amusement tax plays largely, or has played largely over time in the CMRP and the fact that those are closed down is having a very significant impact on the revenue in that fund. And that's another large area that I just thought we should make sure we point out. You know, and the hotel tax is a very significant one as well. And that is the only source in that fund, but in the Capital Maintenance and Replacement Fund, the amusement tax is one of a number of sources in there. And it's being severely impacted by that. On the other side, we are getting a little help in the local motor fuel tax. The addition of Thorntons has been a nice boost for that local motor fuel tax. It's actually going to help that considerably with the amount of revenue that they've reported. They've only reported once or twice at this point, but that is a big help to that fund. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin. Back to John for additional comments.
Yes, Kevin, thank you. You reminded me of a couple of things there too to add on to what you were saying. The theater in Main Event are the by far the largest, almost the entire amount of the amusement tax comes from those two entities. There's some other small contributors, but that is most of it. So when the theater is closed, obviously it's not being remitted because they're not making revenue. And Main Event is certainly down. In addition to that though, they both produce substantial amounts of food and beverage tax, utility taxes, sales taxes when they're up and operating fully and that isn't as clear because we have other providers of those, but it's just a case of where certain, some venues have even bigger impacts than others, but all of them. We need a robust business economy again and business climate here to provide the services, to pay for those and for all the people that work there and own those businesses as well. The other it's certainly those are, and Kevin's pointing out, major impacts on the capital maintenance replacement plan. We keep adjusting those. We'll be presenting more of that information in coming weeks. The Public Works Crew working with finance has been adjusting even the projects for next year because of declining revenues. We expect that someday those will be back, but it will take some time and we may have to mix some things up in that. All of those that plan and others, as you've been reading about in the weekly report, are all under scrutiny with assistance from Alderman and staff. I guess I would just sum it up as Kevin and I may sound a little more relieved than we have in prior months, but it's, I'll use Kevin's vernacular, it's less bad than we thought it would be. It's not great news with our revenues, but for a horrible year, it's less bad than we thought it could be. And we're sustainable. We will be trying to identify what fund balance is being utilized to help keep some things going, but you see some of the bright spots here, that sales tax, locomotor fuel tax, absolutely. And even just a Culvers opening this year has helped. Very counter cyclical with those two things as things that start, those Thorntons and Culvers had both been under construction really before the pandemic hit and opened at the right time for us to help provide some relief from some of the other losses we have. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Mayor, can I add something else into that, please? Not on a revenue note, but I wanted to make note, and it was in the weekly report this last week as well, that we have received all of our CARES Act funding from the county at this point. And that's, it's not in place to offset revenues. That's not what it's for, but we have received $682,000 approximately in reimbursements for costs of us responding to COVID-19 within the community. So that will help us considerably. It's certainly not doing anything to help revenue, but it will help with our bottom line with that additional money we received for our reimbursement for all the expenditures that we've put out for that. And we also do have a supplemental request into the county at this point. There's no guarantee that we will receive any of that money, but we did submit that and do hope that we may actually receive some additional money. But again, there is no guarantee that any of that additional will come to us.
Thank you, Kevin. So we did receive every penny of the money that was allotted to us and we were entitled to, correct?
Absolutely correct, Mayor.
Thank you. It occurred to me when Administrator Coakley was talking that a good epitaph for 2020 would be, it wasn't as bad as it could have been for what it's worth. Okay. Thank you both for that information. Let's go to the Aldermen for questions and/or comments on the financial situation report, beginning with Alderman Anderson.
No questions or comments this time.
Thank you. Alderman Ashauer.
Thank you. No questions or comments.
Thank you. Alderman Berry.
No questions, no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos.
Yeah, no questions, just a comment to again say that this takes a lot of time to put together, I'm sure. So I appreciate the work that's gone into this. It's extraordinarily clear what's going on and it's nice, it's easier to keep up with it. So I appreciate all the work that's gone in.
Thank you. Alderman Goodman.
Yeah, I would second what Alderman Davalos says. This is a lot of work. I think the new version looks a lot clearer. That's all definitely to the good, so please keep the new format. That's my two cents on that. I do have a couple of questions. First of all, in the section about the supplemental CARES Act reimbursement, you mentioned on page five that other communities have sometimes gotten supplemental reimbursements from the county. It's my understanding from a friend who went to the township meeting last week that Winfield Township hasn't used any of its CARES Act money. So can we ask them? I don't, I don't know if we can, but they haven't used any. I think that my friend got the impression that they didn't think it had to be spent by the end of the year, but we've already spent some and they haven't. So I wonder if that's possible. Otherwise, I think it goes back to the county. But that's just what I was told by a friend who went to the township meeting.
Okay, comment, City Administrator Coakley?
Yes, it's my understanding that if you don't use the money allocated for your community, if Warrenville hadn't used our money or the township doesn't use their money, it will go, it will stay with the county and then they will find other purposes for it. It's also my understanding that the expenditure has to be made, we were told, for the city, the expenditures had to be made by December 30th and then we needed to provide the bills as quickly as possible. Sometime into January, they were going to allow that. They've really been trying to expedite all of that because they're very hard at work at the county, trying to figure out what money will not be used. And then that may be used for supplemental payments for anyone who's applied for them as well as county needs. They have, they've used a lot of the money for the county, but with the convalescence center and the health department, they are just, they can probably use quite a bit more of it. So I think the county will find that money. That's also why we submitted supplemental expenditures that we had to see if there was money left over they needed to allocate and we would be in line to possibly receive some of that. The county has vowed, just as I had vowed for local, for Warrenville, that we would locally get all that money that we were entitled to and allocated. The county has vowed that all the money allocated to Page County will remain into Page County and I certainly believe them as hard as I'm working at it. So I hope that answers the questions on that.
I think so. I think so. I guess one comment about the local motor fuel tax, Finance Director Dalström commented that that's looking a lot better than it otherwise would have been because we hadn't budgeted for the Thorntons opening. And I think that, you know, that's an excellent point that when we're doing our budgeting, you know, we don't budget aggressively so that funds that we don't know will arrive are listed in our budget. So before that Thorntons opened and started paying us money, it wasn't in the budget that we expected to get it, even though it had gone forward in the process and had gotten approval. So looking ahead to, I guess, the flip side of that exact same logic, do we then need to make some of our longer-term financial projections for the next budget year operating under the sad assumption that our hotel and amusement businesses may be impacted in the next budget year to try and not assume that we're going to return to normal or return to the revenue that we had experienced in the past? Should we be thinking about budgeting in the same way in the other direction?
Okay, that makes some sense. City Administrator Coakley.
Yes, I completely agree. We're trying to determine how to reject those forward, but we certainly should look at especially based on the revenues that we've seen depressed in our hotels and some of those other businesses, amusement tax, we should continue that forward. We're trying to look at industry things. The Page Convention and Visitors Bureau has been projecting when business travel will return and when the hotel industry will return. Listening to that carefully, that's projected to return to something normal a couple of years from now, at least a year and a half from now. Amusement taxes will have to be a little, I think, less conservative on. I think that may return, although we don't know. A lot of people that have been quarantined and staying at home have learned how to use a lot of different venues to watch movies. We don't know the impact of that. So I agree completely with you. That is the tack that we are taking. And we're really, I hate to say scrambling, but we're working very hard, I will say, to try to figure out how to reject those forward, but we'll be sharing that information as we go forward. And I know that you and Alderman Wilson are working with Kevin and I to look at fund balance, which we're now calling long-term, what is it, long-range financial plan. I got that from your father, by the way, Alderman Goodman, from years ago. Give him credit where it's due. That term. And that is part of what we're trying to project ahead with more eyes and more heads involved because all I can guarantee you is we will not get it exactly perfect. But we will work hard on trying to project fair and conservative revenues for next year.
Okay, and my last question is, page seven mentions the Capital Maintenance and Replacement Fund is down to about $300,000, which is only 56% of the budgeted estimate. I know you haven't broken out every single tax that's in this list and I appreciate the brevity. I don't want this thing to be 50 pages long, but since we're on the subject of declining CMRP revenues, can I ask how the telecom revenues are doing, if you happen to know? Because I think that has sort of had long-term decline and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that still goes into the CMRP.
It does still go into the CMRP. I'm trying to get to that number right now. I'm at computer to see what I can tell you about it. Because I don't have them all memorized completely. It has been a declining revenue for a number of years. It's actually, right now it's performing about where it was a year ago. It's actually down less, just slightly more than one-half of 1%. And the most recent receipt of that was actually up a little bit. So it's probably about where it was a year ago. Right now I'm projecting that we would receive $492,000. Last year for fiscal 19, we received about $443,000. I do, I would think that my projection for the year will actually go down a little bit, but based on what we've received, right now we would see a slight increase, although that has not been the case for most years, so I don't think that will actually hold true in the end.
Yeah, I was thinking about people's increased use of communications equipment and I just wondered if there was an impact. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate the thorough information.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Chrisell?
I have no comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Widener.
Thank you. This is an excellent report and I appreciate staff putting it together. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman. And Alderman Wilson.
Well, the only thing, we got to keep the faith. Things are going to get better and 2021's a challenge, but let's let's walk into it with the expectation that we're going to be the best we can do with what we have to work with. So Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Alderman. Okay. We have nothing under unfinished business. We have nothing listed for new business this evening. We do, however, have the need for a closed session. If I could have a motion with the citations, please.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5 ILCS 120/2, parentheses, parentheses, six, the setting of a piece for sale or lease of property owned by the public body.
Alderman Davalos, second.
Alderman Davalos, second. We have a motion in a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson, oh, sorry. Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. We will now go into closed session. We will not be conducting any business after the closed session. But anyone wishing to stay on the call may do so until the meeting has officially ended. So we will now enter a closed session.
Merry Christmas.
I'll get you one.
Special delivery by the mayor. Stay right there, I'll get it.
Just leaving the meeting.
What, what was?
I left the meeting. I did not end the meeting.
Thank you.
Because last time one of us ended the whole.
What was Bill Widener talking about? Her Berry bought something last week. That's what he said. Now, I think he was congratulating her for the fact that they got community development items on the.
He was chiding her for making fun of Ron at her meeting.
No, that, yeah, no, I got that.
I think he said Ron. I think he said Ron.
He's Ron.
I saw her meeting because they had all the community development items.
Yeah, I'm going to clean my ears. So it's not just me? What's going on? What did I, I couldn't understand Bill Widener. He was talking to Claire or something.
There's a mic still on someplace.
Oh. Wonderful.
Wonderful.